Join us absolutely.
I'm pleased.
For life, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, if you please remove your hats, stand if you can, if not, please bow your heads. Most holy and heavenly Father, we come before you this day in the great country that we live in, that we were allowed to be free, free of speech and free of many other things in this great country, free to express our religion. Oh Lord, we come before you this day asking for your blessings upon our community, for all those that reside here, for those that work hard each and every day, especially our emergency personnel. Oh Lord, we ask that you guide those here today making decisions and those who are contributing to each and every one of those. Oh Lord, we ask all this in your name, Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Mark.
Did you guys get one of these from Miami County?
Yes. We thought you might want to go.
Is it anybody?
Yeah. Cliff and I booked. All right, consent agenda, please. Any discussion on that? Here comes the minutes.
If you make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Hey, approval payroll. Consent agenda on accounts payable as well as payroll?
Make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable. Are we making motions to do that still?
Yeah, I think so. Consent on the agenda, I think is what Justin said, so. I second that motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Department update, Eric Bailey. Come in, sir. Concrete outside looks great.
It does.
I'm sure you're running tally on that, what it will cost us, with the share of the public, how much we saved.
Absolutely. Chad's documenting everything on PubWorks, so we'll have a complete list for you of manpower and equipment and concrete.
I bet it's a lot.
Yeah, so. Yep. With that said, concrete, we're hoping to have two pores left, one for the gutter and one for the parking and get moved out of there. We'll paint parking stalls on what was poured this week and have it opened up next Monday, so there'll be some more parking here on the north side and get that done. It's taking a little longer than we had originally hoped, but Mother Nature has not been very cooperative with us, so anyhow, we will get through that. Just a heads up, we did get through our M Shaw Refresher Course, got that completed last week for our employees, and then we have our new minor training for our new employees will be March 13th, so we'll get everybody ran through their proper training, so we'll have everyone legal to be at the quarries. Speaking of quarries, our crusher update, the drum is in, it's over in Humboldt, we're going to go ahead and move the crusher to Humboldt. They're a little better suited to have to have cranes, overhead cranes and what have you, toys that they can lift the drum out and do it right, so.
Good.
Going that route. Purple Wave was here yesterday to take pictures and videos of our crusher. Looks like it's going to be on, or be up for sale either the 16th or the 21st of March. They're not for sure which sale they're going to put it in for sure, but they will let us know, and then we'll also have two truck bids that'll be in there as well, so kind of give you a heads up on that, what's coming with that. Also, with that said, didn't know if I can get approval to go ahead and go out for bid for a belly dump trailer, so that a way we will have, we're planning on using the money that we get from the crusher to at least buy a trailer, so we can get more gravel on the road. Would like to go ahead and start that process, because we'll have to do a bid process, and that a way we're not waiting until we get the money and then going back out for bid, we can have everything in line, so I don't know your thoughts, but.
Well, you know, I've been a supporter of the second belly dump for quite some time, you know, I've discussed it, and it just gives us an avenue while we're asphalting for several months, still gives us the opportunity to hopefully move some gravel or all of our gravel roads, because as you know, we can get a length time error that's not good for our gravel roads, but that will give you an opportunity, so I would support, I'll make a motion to allow Eric to go out for bids on a belly dump, what, 21, 23 yard belly dump?
Yep.
Any discussion?
To use the money from Purple Wave to sell the.
Yeah, that'd be part of the motion, to use the money from Purple Wave to pay cash for the belly dump, so.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 On a, speaking of asphalt, on a positive note, I've started visiting with the different companies on our asphalt oil. Currently, the price is down about $175 to $100 a ton on the asphalt oil, and the fuel or diesel fuel is down about a dollar, so that's dropping our cost of producing asphalt. We're waiting to hear pricing back on the sand, I got another meeting today with another oil supplier to see where they can come in at, and, but with that said, we do need to set a date and time for an asphalt work session.
You got anything on your mind for a date?
I have, I'm wide open, completely up to you guys, I don't know if you want to wait till March, you want to do it before.
What are these other two, like, I'm good about anything.
If you want to do it on.
Our meetings doesn't last very long anymore, we could do it on Tuesday morning almost.
Perfectly great with that as well.
Shouldn't take an hour or two.
Yeah, that's what.
I would appreciate just on the agenda of some Tuesday morning.
Okay.
10:30, 11 o'clock, work session, so.
Okay, I'll just put it on there then, and when we get all of our pricing and everything ready for you, like I said, I'm waiting to hear back on sand, so I don't know how long that's going to be, and getting some other pricing on chip and seal and some milling and things like that, so when I get all my pricing then, I'll.
Good.
Just get it on the agenda and we'll go from there.
Okay. Sounds great.
And that is all I have. Anybody have anything for me? Nope.
I don't, I don't, we appreciate what you're doing out there.
Thank you.
All the guys, we appreciate what they do.
Will do, will do.
It's a thankless job.
Got a great group.
Yep, okay. Okay, moving right along, 2022 payroll recap. I bet that's Ms. RCFO. Morning.
Good morning. This is really just informational, I wanted to, I'll probably start doing things like this to have like a year-end annual report, but this will be a part of that report, just to show where you might see some fluctuation in numbers, where we might have bigger turnover. And then also, it shows overtime, the report shows overtime by department, there's some of that is built in overtime, so you have to think about that depending on how their shifts run, some of that's built in, and so we know that ahead of time. Now that we're fully staffed, you can kind of see on the ambulance side of things that we're starting to see those numbers go down a little bit, because we have enough paramedics. And then the final report just talks about earnings by department, so you can see if there's a fluctuation by pay period for each department, and it just kind of gives you an idea if they're, you know, if we're paying a lot more in one period of time over another. So I didn't know if anybody had any questions about those reports that I gave you.
Yes, so what are these numbers here?
So those are pay periods, so we have 26 pay periods in a year, and so that kind of tells you when you see a pay period go up, you might, you know, you might want to, and I can give these to you quarterly, so you can kind of see these as they're happening, or I can do it annually. But it's just a nice gauge to see how the money's being spent. This is just salaries, payroll, it does not include benefits, and so my plans are to do another report that is just about the benefits.
And what is this again, E counts?
Employee counts by pay period. So on that particular report, you can see that EMS, you see a lot of fluctuation there, you see a lot on the corrections side of things and public works, that's where we tend to have our turnover. And if we had a big jump in something, I tried to explain why, like when we pulled EMS over in May, that was the reason why some of this jumped.
Some small print for old people.
I know, I know, I know, and I have it on bigger paper if you need the bigger paper.
Even my Bible's large print, so, anyway. Anyone have any questions?
Were there bonuses, what is?
Which departments?
I noticed the clerk of Treasury Department's up in December.
Yes. That actually flagged for capers too, I had to give an explanation for why that was up, and they gave their employees bonuses at the end of the year, so.
Fairly substantial.
Yeah, they were.
Nice bonuses.
Yeah, I think they were $1,500 a person. Hopefully, this week I will finish closing down the year, and I can get you more financial reports that kind of gives you an idea where people ended up for their budgets for the end of the year as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my next thing is we've been asked to do a letter of support for a moderate income housing program, this is for, I think it's Palmory Development, this is for the downtown Van Fossen Building, which we kind of probably know more as a JCPenney's Building, and so they're wanting to do a 16-unit apartment project, and so they're just asking for a letter of support for their grant.
I believe the city's always supported it, correct?
Mm-hmm, it's a partnership between the city and then.
Just a letter of support from us?
Yes.
I'm not in favor.
Okay.
What's it for?
It's for a housing grant.
It's asking us to do something without me knowing anything about it?
Yeah.
Not me, anyway.
Yeah. It's a housing grant, I don't really know a whole lot about the project, I just know that a lot of times they, you ask for a letter of support for, when you do your grants, because it gives them a better opportunity to get the grant.
Did they make a presentation to the city, do you know?
I honestly don't know, I don't know if it's low-income housing, I don't know if it's, it's modern income housing is the grant program.
That the city's applying for?
It would be a city and this development's partnership.
A developer applies for it, the city just funnels the money.
Yeah.
And they have to have the city's support to get the grant.
And then there's usually on these type of grants, there's, they have to report back like income and lots of different things if they're getting one of these grants over a period of time.
So a developer is the one that brought it to the city trying to get it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that sounds, that sounds like a good thing, what's, what does, what do we have to do, I mean, what's our part in it?
Nothing, just a letter of support, that's all they're asking.
So it was support developer and the city moving forward with moderate income housing for a grant, all it says is we're, we think we need moderate income in the county and cities.
They give any information on their project, or what they want to do, or anything like that?
They did not.
I talked to a local banker, I want to share what information they've shared with us, it was like a $4 million project total, going into JCPenney Building and the one to the north, that's all I know, and I know one local bank supports it, I know the city of Fort Scott supports it.
How many units did you say, my understanding it was 12?
It's a 16-unit apartment.
I don't know.
$250,000 per apartment, of taxpayer money. Mine is an adamantly no.
Okay.
Nelson, where you at on it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is taxpayer money, but is this a federal or state grant? Where's this grant?
It's probably federal, coming down to the state, state will administer it, but I think it's federal dollars.
And someone's going to get that federal money, if it's not this project, some other project, probably, but.
The thing with grants is that they give a lot of grants out, and everyone always says, "It's our money, it's our money, it's taxpayers' money."
It is.
First of all, we've already been down this, we've taken many, many, many grants, but the more you take, the more it gives them basically legitimizes the fact that they are involved in so many things, but, so you're basically supporting a flawed system whenever you're, anytime you have your hand out for grants. That being said.
If we don't apply for it, another community's going to get it.
Yeah, but.
The grant's still going to be available.
That's the vicious cycle.
It is. It is a cycle, but this grant money's going to go to somebody or someone. Mr. McCoy?
So in the absence of our Economic Development Director, I would make a suggestion, if this person wants us to do that, we should ask them to come here and explain to us and talk to us, or at least send us an official letter with all the information you're requesting. I don't know if it's good, or I don't know if it's not so good, there's many different facets to it, but downtown economics and development is important, but I'm not saying this is a good or necessarily the other way, so I think more information's needed, I think you should request that before voting on it.
They say anything about a deadline?
No, not to me.
I would say that, I made it pretty clear two years ago when I started this, there's no way I'm going to vote on something and approve something the same day it's brought to me. It's happened more than once in the last couple, three months, and I'm really, really not happy about it, and this is no different. So that, anyway, but you get to do what you want, I'm just, I'm just putting my foot down pretty hard.
I'm good with that gentleman or lady coming to make a presentation to us, give us more information.
Okay.
So again, I did receive some emails from a local banker, but it wasn't a lot of information on my bottom, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't receive anything, so.
Okay, thank you. Tri Valley Board Member Appointment. This one we talked about last week, and Clifton asked for more information, I believe.
Yep.
And Jennifer has provided that to us.
So I spoke with our representative from Tri Valley, and the board meets on the fourth Thursday at 6:00 every other month, she said that's the way that they come up with names, is they will meet with their board members, see who is involved within the county and city and might be a good fit for, for their board, and that's how they came up with the names.
So this board is currently served by Steve Shul and Lindsay Madison.
Yes.
That's our responsibility, appointed third member?
Correct.
And they don't have any recommendations?
Yes, they did send us one.
Those were a different board, weren't they?
We got that, that same board in, and we got a recommendation from them, it's the same board.
Oh, same board? Well, one's the Tri Valley Board, the board director is, okay, gotcha.
Which they do have, they do have a foundation board and then this board, but they're just asking for a nomination to the Board of Directors.
Anything you're interested in serving, Nelson, or no? No?
Not really, no.
I don't either, really, so.
Okay.
Well, I would ask, I would probably ask Mrs. Dare if she was here, if she was interested, but she's not here today, so it's not fair for me to even say that, but I hope she's not offended that I say that.
That'd be a great choice, Ms. Dare.
I think she's active and knowledgeable in a lot of things, but that's not fair, because she's not here, so, and I haven't spoken to her, so I probably shouldn't have even said that, hope she doesn't care, that would be my recommendation.
Tableau next week, invite Ms. Dare here.
Okay, can do that.
Somebody could reach out, see if she's interested, she may not have reached.
Or Jennifer, you'd like, you might try the other two commissioners, visit with her and tell her what we'd like to do.
Okay.
In a way, she won't be surprised when she just shows up. We get a pre, other pre-note.
Okay. And then.
Thank you. County clerk training classes.
Yes, so there are some training classes that I will need to attend to be a certified county clerk. Right now, they are only once a year, so unfortunately, I don't have somebody hired in my office yet, I'm hoping to, these classes are going to be March 6th through 10th, so I'm just letting, letting you know that I potentially might have to close my office March 6th through 10th. There is a class on this Thursday, February 16th, that I need to attend, and I will unfortunately have to close my office, because I don't have, I don't have the staff to cover, so I don't want to do that, but it's also one of those things I have to train, go to the training classes.
I think we wholeheartedly support you going to training.
Okay, I just want to be very open with the public, like I said, I don't want to close my office for any reason, I haven't been taking lunches, I've been here all day, but this is requirements, we're having an election this year, so I'm trying to get any, any information, any knowledge, any training that I can get to be able to serve our citizens better.
We appreciate you going to training, thank you.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Over to comments. Well, commission comments.
I would make a, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, and we can discuss it, I guess, if it gets a second, but I would, for a very, for a number of reasons, a couple reasons, I would make a motion that we move our meetings to Thursdays.
I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
Can we talk about it first?
Sure, I don't know.
Well, our counselor, our county counselor is unavailable on Tuesdays now. So that's probably, that's one of the big reasons, and then it would allow Jennifer and Susan and some people more time to be ready for our meeting, as opposed to, I know that, well, I know Jennifer's working 24 hours a day, seven days a week right now, or I think she is anyway.
About 15 hours, not 24 hours.
Okay, well, you give her sleep and some, but, and then I know that Susan and Shane sometimes have to work on Sundays to get ready for Tuesday meetings, so, but also, the fact matter is, Justin isn't able to be around Tuesdays anymore, and as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter what day it means, so.
My only comment would be, and I certainly support this, for the first six months, I'm going to miss some Thursdays, because that's the day we usually go camping on Wednesdays, so I've already booked like four different reservations, so some Thursday, I mean, I haven't missed one yet, but I'm, what I'm saying, I'm going to miss a couple Thursdays, because I'll be, I'll be on the phone, you're correct, so, yeah, I support it, so.
What's, what's the first, first day that it would be on a Thursday, think?
As far as I'm concerned, next week, of course, do we have a night meeting next week?
I don't think we have one scheduled, do we? We talked about it, but I don't know if we picked a date.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that as well, but whether next week's meeting is going to be on Tuesday or Thursday, I'm going to be out of town for training on both of those days.
Okay. Well, can you call in? Maybe?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay. Okay, is that a motion, Clifton?
Yeah, it's my motion, move meetings to Thursday.
Yeah, I second it.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Meetings are hereby moved to Thursdays? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good, good deal. Well, those comments, gentlemen, I'm going to stick a record break to meetings here.
This, our meetings should go all the time, that'd be nice.
I'm sorry?
This is, look at the time, it's 9:25, it's.
You know, it's not a big agenda, we have, don't have a crowd.
No arguing, no fighting, that's great.
Yeah. Take the podium then, kill them by 20 minutes worth.
Thank you for allowing me to interject.
Yeah, and I like, I appreciate what Clifton said, we need information and not have to make a decision the first minute, you know, and I'm just almost sure a presentation was made to the city, which they have to have their blessing, but they just want a letter of support from us, which is great, but they can make a little presentation, someone could to us, so.
Well, I, so to that point, I did see an article in the newspaper, so I don't know, were you, I don't know if you were at the city, but there was information presented to the city in some fashion before they made their decision, but to Commissioner Beth's point, I mean, we don't want to be like those folks up in Topeka, I don't think they do it much, but really in Washington DC where last-minute decisions are made, and so I think it's important to take your time to gather facts and information and make a good decision based on facts and information, just like investigating something that goes on, they have to do an investigation, and they can't just give you an instant answer, so anyhow, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yep.
Matt Quick, anything you want to talk about?
No, sir.
Start scheduling, going to other schools and cities, I will accompany you if I can, so.
April 5th, the high school has scheduled a day of education for the students, and it's where businesses and industry, whether that's government, for them to come in, and there'll be tables to talk about, like the police department will be there, the fire department should be there, it's, it's, I forget the title, that's not good.
Job fair?
Job fair, I don't think it's, it's job fair, but I think it's more than that, but to that point, having a table there for the county, for potential employees, and talking about the opportunities there to stay right here in Bourbon County and be employed, it's a great way to work your way up, I mean, I know a number of people that started as a dispatch person, or started as a volunteer in the fire department or police department or reserve person, and have worked their way up, so that kind of job, on-the-job training is terrific, I'm asking Senator Moran to have somebody here from his office, Jacob LaTurner, Congressman, to have somebody here from his office to talk about government. Kids are very interested in many things, so if the county would be possible to have a booth there, I know a young lady who's helping coordinate it at the high school, so she's asked me to go out and speak on that behalf, so, but it's important for us to know those kids and to understand that we're here, and what, what do you do? Well, we're here to support the community, and we're, in most cases, volunteers are get paid very little to do this job, it's terrific, I mean, I'm going to end, because I want this to end at 9:30, so, thank you.
It is the FSHS Career Fair.
Career Fair, okay.
Career Fair, it's Wednesday, April 5th, 8 to noon, and along with the Fort Scott High School students, Union Town High School students will be there also, so it'll be potentially 690 plus or minus students, it says.
That'd be good.
So I assume that's making sure that every student is at school that day, which obviously doesn't happen, but anyway, that's what the email says, so they're out in Union Town, so that'd be good.
We want to do a table, and who would man that table or lady that table? We want to do a table, and who would man that table or is lady that table?
Politically correct, Jim.
What happens with other groups is that they take turns, so maybe eight to ten is one or two people, preferably two, and then ten to twelve would be two people. And again, if you're trying to hire, if you're trying to hire, you have somebody there who can speak cogently about that. That's the word of the day, cogently.
So.
Ask myself.
So, so Clifton should be there for two of those hours and another.
I, I've actually been to deal at the high school. There's good, and there's a, there's good turnout from the kids, and generally they interact, so.
You could do hours too, if you get four people for one hour.
It's not that big a deal. It's eight to twelve. It's not, you know? And I think if Skills USA's who's doing it, uh, which is what the email said, I mean, they, heck, they may provide lunch for people that's there. I don't know, sometimes. I know that wasn't Skills, that was a different group I was with, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
And I'm sure you already know that our two thirty-four, two thirty-five are trying to work very closely now and going forward with Fort Scott Community College to, 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 to get more students to know and understand the importance of, the potential of education. What I mean by education is skills training.
Trades.
Trades. It's, it's, it's very important that we have plumbers and electricians and carpenters, because in any day of the week, you could try to call a plumber. Today's Tuesday. Sure, I can get there next Tuesday. Electrician, I'll be there on the eighteenth of March. That's how backed up they are. I mean, the, these folks, they're good trades. They make good money, you know? And, and you could be a apprentice and work your way up, and that's the way to do it. But HVAC, there's lots of needs for that. So these, these trades are out there, and Fort Scott Community College in, in, in association with Pittsburgh State University do this. So anyhow, I, it's, it's important that we try to support that in some way. Maybe we have somebody here who's employed with the county, who, who went through that education at some point in their, their, their life and can say, that's what helped get me to where I'm at today, like Eric.
No, a few weeks ago, I attended a community college board member meeting, and they had received, receiving a grant to buy heavy equipment, scintillators. That's pretty neat, and go out and get trained, and they made comment they might contact this board of a final testing procedure of a student spending time in a dozer, simulator, motor grader, et cetera. And if we could ever work out anything with them, then they come out and really set on a real dozer. But that's something we'll have to talk about in the future, but I'm excited about that, that they're trying to teach it, so.
I had planned on having a table there, but I would love to have anybody come sit at that table with me. That'd be awesome.
It's April fifth?
Yes. I'd already planned on having a table there.
I'm probably the least busy. I think Clifton already brought that up, so.
I was gonna try to put together some pamphlets of all the different things that we offer by.
If the other two commissioners are okay with it, I will join you April fifth.
Okay.
That's fine with me. I will allow it.
I thought you got it. First thing came out, Clifton out, and Jim can go. Okay, I can do it. Thank you, Mark. I will put down. Fair, eight o'clock, call it, the high school. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Make sure to adjourn, I guess. What is that? What's next Thursday?
The Republican Committee meeting, I believe.
Yes, I was notified that there is a meeting next Thursday for elected officials to attend, so if you are wanting. Yes, if you're wanting to attend, I believe there needs to be a motion that you can all attend with no business taking place.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion.
What day? Twenty?
Twenty, twenty-third, six P M.
On Sunday?
No.
Oh, March, I'm sorry. I'm one, February, I'm two months ahead.
I think it's Thursday.
Yes.
Thursday, twenty-third, February, make a motion to allow, if desired, three commissioners to attend. I know I'll be out of town. You have the two, Mike?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Six P M?
Six P M.
February twenty-third, next Thursday.
And under very important public service announcements, next Tuesday is Fat Tuesday, and the Kiwanis Club will be having their one hundred and tenth pancake feed, and all of the proceeds from there go to scholarships at the high school. Last year, we gave out eight scholarships. So that is a drive-through only at the Methodist Church, eleven-thirty to one-thirty, and then four-thirty to six-thirty P M. Drive-through only at the Methodist Church. And I'm sure you're very well aware of the most world's famous fish fry that is conducted in Bourbon County that has about five hundred people every Friday night during the Lenten season. Southern fried catfish, it is fantastic. Spaghetti, baked potatoes, baked fish. And the ladies of the parish make multiple, multiple delicious desserts. Some of the people, when they first walk in, they actually go get desserts first, which they're not supposed to, and then stake out a seat. But we're, we would love to have you folks, and a hundred percent of the proceeds for that will go to the restoration, excuse me, rebuilding of the Catholic Church. You don't have to be Catholic to come. We don't, we don't propagate the religion or faith while we're there. It's food, folks, and fun. Okay? And it's a free will offering, so we would love to have you come out. That's we. I, I am a member of the Knights of Columbus in, in full disclosure, and I do help cook the fish and everything else, so. That's five to seven P M. Would love to see any or all of you. You have carryout too. Feed the police, feed the firemen. They deserve it. Some of them need to gain some weight.
Some of them don't.
And share with the other one. Thank you for letting me. It's now nine-thirty-seven. I didn't want to keep it.
Should've had a road medium swarm, but Rick's not ready probably, so. Okay, most adjourn, I guess.
Second.
I make a motion to adjourn? You second it? Any discussion? Anything else, Clifton? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.